All right, welcome everybody. It is 6:30 PM on August 15th, 2017. This is a regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Polikas absent. Shumway?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Somerville?
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda will be a public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice, please?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will hold the following public meeting at 6:30 PM on August 15th, 2017, in the council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments following TA-17-04 Public Hearing Submitted by the City of Laramie to create a new section within the Laramie Municipal Code that establishes regulations for mobile vending operations within the city of Laramie. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to this matter are available for review at the City of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I will open the floor for any public comment on this mobile vending ordinance during this public hearing. Does anybody here would like to give a public comment? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Thank you, City Clerk. We'll move on to our next item, which is announcements. City Manager, do we have any announcements?
Mayor and Council, we have, I guess, one announcement in two parts. It is, of course, Fifth Cent Tuesday, and we're taking an opportunity, one Tuesday of every month, to highlight the work of our community partner agencies in Laramie. Tonight, we have short videos, they're, I think, about a minute and a half long. One from ARC Regional Services and the other from Laramie Plains Museum Iverson Mansion, talking about the work they're doing in the community.
Thank you.
ARC Regional Services is a City of Laramie community partner, and this is how we put your pennies to work. ARC purchased an electronic foyer lift that was recently installed at our Equestrian Center. This lift allows people with physical and cognitive challenges the opportunity to mount a horse and receive equine-assisted therapies and services. These services increase the cognitive, physical, emotional, and social well-being of individuals with disabilities. Countless Laramie citizens have benefited from the services provided at the ARC Equestrian Center over the last 25 years. With the assistance provided by the Fifth Cent Sales and Use Tax, we will be able to continue to provide these services for many years to come. On behalf of everyone at ARC Regional Services,
Just stepping onto the property of the magnificent Iverson Mansion, one is transported to its treasured bygone days. The 1892 mansion, its carriage house, and the Alwood County Stevens Reception Center were saved, restored, and now maintained by volunteers and community partners. The City of Laramie is able to be a current partner because of the Fifth Penny Tax, knowing that any help can keep this landmark as a beacon of the history of this vibrant western town and the English couple who helped to bring it to life in 1868. Assistance with upgrading heating systems, restrooms, sidewalks, and expanded spaces on the 125-year-old property have been some of the city's partnerships. All community partners help to sustain Laramie's favorite museum at the Iverson Mansion as a destination, annually attracting more than 28,000 visitors who learn from and enjoy its exhibits, events, historic presentations, and lush landscapes. A center point of Laramie's history and activities, we are proud to be Fifth Penny Partners with the City of Laramie.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have two other quick announcements, and that is to clarify that the City Council will be meeting in City Council Chambers next week for our work session, and then taking a mobile tour up to the north campus. And then the second announcement I have is we received today from Tourism, this beautiful framed poster from Robert Fuller, who was here for Jubilee Days, and a thank you note to the City of Laramie. And we're going to take this, I think, and display it in the foyer in the hallway for everybody. It is very beautiful. It has a coin and everything down here. So I thought that was very generous of Tourism. Counselor Schuster and I both went and met with Mr. Fuller, and it was quite nice. Is there anything else you want to say about that, Brian?
No, he was very congenial. Both Andy and I had bought a thing representing Laramie. We each did it ourselves and presented, did a presentation to him. Laramie will be 150 years old next year, and I, my brother, does a CNC wood machine, and we built a very large emblem. I brought it down, displayed it here for one week, and then gave it to him, and we're going to start that celebration going pretty soon, that we will be 150 years old next year.
Thank you. All right, so any other announcements, City staff?
No, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item is disclosures by City Council members. Does anybody have any disclosures for items tonight? Seeing none, move on to item number six. Vice Mayor, changes.
Yes, so I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. It's on our consent, our first one is on our consent agenda. It's item 8I. We are going to delete in its entirety. And then the other change is on the regular agenda, item number 16. We will be deleting one of our reasons for adjourned to executive session, which is personnel. Wyoming Statute Number 14, or 16-4-450AX.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
All right, I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second. Second by Counselor Henry. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas absent. Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 10. Counselor McKinney.
I move to award the 2016 Overlay Project bid to Knife River Corporation of Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the amount not to exceed $495,413.71 to approve the contract therefore and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Engineer Japp.
Should it be 2017?
Yeah.
Should it be 17? City Clerk, would you note the change?
Change, yeah.
Yes.
To make it the 2017 Overlay Project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Japp, what is yours?
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, as was noted in the cover sheet, all the city streets are routinely evaluated using a payment management system. And using this system's criteria, and also looking at the city's traffic demands, Garfield Street from 30th to Boulder was selected for this year's project. This project will include the striping that was approved by council a few weeks ago, that you all remember, and it is staff's recommendation to award this project to Knife River. With that, I can answer any questions you may have regarding it.
Questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one question about the timing of the project. It doesn't say here when it's going to happen, if I remember. And since we have so much construction going on in town, will it interfere further with getting through town in some fashion, or will that all be taken care of? I have terrible time getting around town right now. That may be my daftness in doing that, but I just have a question concerning this particular matter. Will there be any further, let's call it inconvenience to the public as far as getting around?
Your Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, this project will probably start next week, is what our contractor is talking about. So there will be more inconvenience. However, this project should just be a few weeks long. It's not going to be a long project to do their, you know, try to get in and get out as soon as they possibly can.
But it will be overlaid, right?
That is correct. Also in this area, we, the plans right now are to try to remain, keep two-way traffic as the way the contract is written.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, and the striping is part of this project, and will be done, completed with the project. So that will also be a few days to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Counselor Gabriel.
Just curious, what kind of access will be available with all of the people going back to school? Is it going to be shut down completely, or can you?
Yeah, Your Honorable Mayor, Counselor Gabriel, right now, as I noted earlier, we wrote the contract that two-way traffic will be maintained throughout the mill and overlay, and that is the plan right now. Unless the contractor can provide significant reasons of cost savings, or timing, or something like that, at that point, city staff may consider shutting down the road. But right now, it is written that it's basically going to remain open at all times. There has been some preliminary discussions that, like, if we, for the striping, it may get shut down for just a day or two. That may actually speed up the project by four or five days. So that would be the time when we'd consider, like, a complete shutdown, but we try to coordinate that as much as possible with that. Access into the businesses and everything else will be maintained as much as possible. You know, obviously, when the paver's going right in front of it, they won't have direct access at that location, but we, the contractor, will be required to coordinate with all the properties along the area and everything else.
Thank you.
Counselor Schuster.
So yeah, I understand completely what you're saying. So my guess on this is they will probably put up the no parking signs, both sides, so that they can, like you said, road a mill, probably two lanes, and keep two lanes over there, and then asphalt it, and then move everything to that side. So yeah, just no parking there for a week or so. But yeah, get in, get it done, and get out.
Counselor Shumway.
Didn't see it, but I'm assuming that the city is going to move the parking into the ice arena and also the recreation center parking, so that those parking slots that are going to be taken will be provided for, you know, for anyone that wants to park in those areas. Is that correct?
Your Honorable Mayor, Counselor Shumway, there really hasn't been discussion for the temporary time of what's going to happen with the parking. Well, the contractor will have to work with the businesses, but while the project's going on, we'll have to kind of find alternative parking in the area.
Any other questions?
I have one quick question. Obviously, this has an impact on Alwood County School District, and we are partnering with them. They're aware of the project and will be included in any of the discussions going forward about street closures and access.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the public understands we're working with.
Yeah, Your Honorable Mayor, whenever we close a road and do anything like this, we have a notification system with the school district that we always let them know. So we'll let all the staff at Albany County School District know what the schedule is and everything else. Obviously, since this project hasn't been awarded, we're still trying to figure out, these are just kind of some preliminary discussions we've had with the contractor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there any comments from the public on this project? Seeing none, any discussion from council on this project? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas absent. Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. On to item number 11, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is Amendment 1 to the Project Development Agreement between the City of Laramie Chamber Business Alliance and High Vis. I move to approve Amendment 1 to the Project Development Agreement between the City of Laramie, Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, and High Vis, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Henry. Mr. Fersted, floor is yours.
Honorable Mayor, Councilors, thanks for your time. So the amendment, and we've seen a few of these in the past, this takes what staff put together in the grant application, which is an estimate based on programming and square footage and an associated budget that's put together by an engineer. When we get into the project and we employ a design team and a construction group to put it together, and through a pretty productive buyout process here, we were able to more accurately define actual square footage of the building, actual budget for the construction design, et cetera. And then there's some relationship to the grant agreement, the match requirements, and we wanted to clean all that up, put it into one amendment to clearly define the scope of the building, roles and responsibilities of parties, and this does exactly that. So everything will be clean and ready to move forward. Open it up to any questions, please.
Questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Budget. We still have, I guess, coming forward $3 million in grant, right? And then, just to clarify in my mind, then the land structure, that is the donation from the city, that is valued at $150,000. Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, you're correct. You're almost exactly correct. So the Wyoming Business Council Guidelines for the City of Laramie require a 5% match.
Yeah.
And the match is being met through a land contribution, but that's from our partner in the project.
That's correct.
LCBA.
And that represents 5%, $150,000 is 5% of $3 million.
The land was appraised for $361,000, but in the budget worksheet, I represented it as the match required, not the actual appraised value.
That was going to be my next question. Actually, the contribution is really much higher than that, but why are we saying $150,000 just to make it 5%? Or, I didn't understand that.
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, that's a fantastic question. So the way that the Business Council Guidelines base their grant amount on a match percentage, it's a mathematical calculation, and it's based on overall project budget. And the project budget includes cost of design, cost of construction, engineering, et cetera, but also the, any contribution. So if it's a land contribution, a cash contribution, in-kind contributions, all go into the formula for a required match. So the higher the project cost can skew the match required. So when I put this budget worksheet together to form this PDA, we wanted to make it an exact 5%. We wanted to represent it that way, so as to not require any additional calculation or mathematical problem solving, I suppose, would be one way to put it.
So are we telling the grant agency we're actually contributing more, or?
The, Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, the Wyoming Business Councils, they're party to the appraisal, the document, everything that makes up the match contribution. This was just a simple, just a simple way to put it into the budget worksheet.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
City Manager.
If I could add as well, Council, when we assert land as an in-kind donation, we are obliged by the Business Council to substantiate the value of that land through an appraisal or market assessment. So it's not arbitrary. We don't get to make it up. Someone that knows has to verify it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Harris, is there anything that LCBA wants to add to this? You don't have to, it's just your option.
I'll just say thank you, and we appreciate your continued support. And without your assistance, these projects couldn't go forward. And all the staff time that it takes for everybody involved to go forward, it's truly a good working partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this project? Any comments or discussion from council? Counselor Schuster.
Yes, I work very near, close to them. One of their neighbors. If you haven't driven by, you need to drive by. The building is going up quite quick. It's, the steel is up. I believe one complete wall is done. I think the roof's done. It's not the roof's done yet, okay, but it is going quite quick, and I know they hope to be in it yet this year, so.
Any other discussion? Comments from council? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Polikas absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Move on to item number 12. Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. The title of this item is Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Design and Preconstruction Contract for the High Vis Phase II Facility. I move to approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Design and Preconstruction Contract for construction of the High Vis Phase II Facility with GH Phipps Construction of Wyoming in an amount not to exceed $3 million, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Mr. Fersted, the floor is yours again.
Honorable Mayor, Council, thanks again for your time. So this is an instrument that we've used several times. You guys might be getting sick of seeing them by now, but we've gone through the design, programming, and obviously, a pretty heavy amount of preconstruction, as Counselor Schuster had mentioned. We went through the public bid process, and we've got a scope of work to put the whole building together to meet High Vis's needs and the future landlords' needs in the LCBA. So this contract just gives us full spending authority to complete the project. Gladly open it up to any questions.
Questions? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Budget again. I'm surprised that the matching money isn't on the budget. It only says the $3 million, and carries the $3 million down there. Is there a reason for that, or?
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, that, good question. There is a reason for it. So the PDA amendment that we just reviewed, there's three parties to that. There's the City of Laramie, High Vis, and then the LCBA, and that defines all roles and responsibilities there. And for that component of the project, this contract, there's two parties. There's GH Phipps Construction of Wyoming, and there's the City of Laramie. And GH Phipps, the constructor, has put forth this contract amendment and agreement to construct the project, design, construct it, and close it out. They're not, they're not party to our revenue source for it, Business Council. There's no practical reason to represent the match amount in this contract instrument.
Thank you, that satisfies my concern. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Would the LCBA like to say anything on this amendment? Any comments from the public on this? Seeing none, any discussion or comments from council? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Moving on to item number 13. Counselor Henry.
This is original ordinance number 1972, amending Title V of Laramie Municipal Code, creating Chapter 5.82 Mobile Vending, and amend Chapter 5.76 Vending in Parks to create a new code section which establishes regulations for mobile vending businesses while within the city of Laramie. I move to approve original ordinance number 1972, as shown in Attachment 1 and Attachment 2, in accordance with findings of fact and conclusions of law, noting a public hearing was held August 1st, 2017, and August 15th, 2017.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. Mr. Connor?
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
So, real quick, we provided you with quite a bit of information between the last meeting and now. So I'm going to try to give you a quick run-through as quick as I possibly can with the new information that's on your cover sheet, as well as go over the public comment that you received. Staff received no other public comments directly, so this is the only one that we have to go off between the last two meetings, or this meeting and this meeting. So in this updated information section that you have on your cover sheet, we tried to hit all of the points that were brought up during the previous meeting that maybe there were some concerns about or there was some confusion about, and just try to hit those and clarify those more succinctly than me trying to do it up here. So the initial portion is just the time limit per location. This was clearly an issue of contention that was brought up. Just reminding again that currently, there was no limit, time limit provided for within city right-ofways, because as the code stands, vending within the city right-ofway is prohibited. So if we were to continue forward with that in mind, then staff would recommend putting some sort of time limit on vending within the right-ofway. Furthermore, the time limit is really just a tool that we use to ensure that our mobile vending businesses vending businesses are actually mobile. There are different ways to establish a business on a site permanent, or with what's called a minor temporary use. Within town, these are things like car lots, or like a Christmas tree lot, these types of things that are around for a small period of time, and need to go through an additional process with us in the Planning Division. So, there are different routes for actually establishing permanence on a site. However, city staff doesn't believe that a mobile vendor should be establishing permanently on a site without going through our current regulations. So, thus why the time limit is included. As a note, staff, we did originally recommend just no storage of vending operations on sites. This is clearly what we've been seeing in other communities around the region. However, the mobile vendors during our pre-meetings with them, they desire no time limit, so we ended up increasing our zero to a three-day overnight limit to allow for those longer stays. Again, this doesn't require them to not be at a certain location for more than three days, simply they cannot store their materials, their actual business, at the location for more than three nights. So, if they were to locate there on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, they could leave the vehicle there until Wednesday night, in which case it would need to go and be stored properly in accordance with the code, and then it could return to that same site Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then do that again Saturday night. So, it does not impose any sort of restriction on where they can vent and how long they can vent at that certain site, simply that they need to store their vehicle and their business in an appropriate manner. If you notice, we included some of the time limit regulations for the other communities. Typically, we're seeing a handful of hours per day, and it being stored somewhere else at night. Again, with the Cheyenne regulations being a little bit different, those are also a little bit different and very similar to the requirements that we have for our special event permit, simply stating that you're going to be doing this from X time to X time. Licensing fees, we proposed $120 per year per mobile vending unit with a prorating option at the request of the mobile vendors. With the current fee schedule attempting to operate at a net zero because of our current fiscal situation, staff believes that that $120 per year is going to cover roughly three to five hours of staff time annually per vehicle. Staff does believe that that will probably get us to hit that net zero. If you wish to increase or decrease, that is up to the city council's decision, because you are the ones that set the fee schedule. Staff does believe that potentially this prorating may cause a deficit, just because regardless of how many months a vendor may or may not be operating, the same inspections and requirements are still going to be had. So, the same amount of staff time is still going to be required to actually go through these inspections. So, that may cause an issue. It may not. It really depends. Again, the annual costs are included in that as well, for other communities in the area. As far as mobile vending downtown, this was brought up, with the availability of, you know, being able to vend mobily downtown, as we're seeing a lot of people walking the streets and spending a lot of their time and money in the downtown area, clearly this would be a good thing to have more businesses and more restaurants available for customers. It was brought up the availability of parks, and parking near the parks in order to qualify for that as opposed to vending within the right-of-way. There are two parks within downtown, First Street Plaza and the Depot Park, but staff does bring attention to the different private businesses that are within the downtown district that do actually have parking lots and available parking for mobile vending to occur on private property while still being downtown and not within the right-of-way. We're getting quite a few issues brought up with parking in the downtown already, and so vending within the right-of-way would clearly diminish more parking spots. Just in general, vending within the right-of-way, it was brought up as a potential to actually do and amend this code in order to do so. If you decide to go that route, staff does just request some time to actually amend all the portions of code that would be affected by allowing vending within the right-of-way. Furthermore, there are some implications that will likely be occurring if that happens, just a general increase in insurance for mobile vendors, because the city will need to be an additional insured and certificate holder. When thinking about this, city staff realized that it would be very difficult to actually monitor and enforce which mobile vendors are allowed within the right-of-way and which ones wouldn't be, so it would likely be one fell swoop of requiring all mobile vendors in order to get their license to have the city as an additional insured, and they're all able to vent within the right-of-way. We did bring up the fact that during our preliminary meetings with the mobile vendors, this wasn't a point of contention. There are a lot of other things that took top priority over the ability to vent within the right-of-way, because it was stated that most of them are vending on private property now, and that's where they spend most of their time, so vending within the right-of-way wasn't all that big of an issue. However, if you decide to allow it, staff just requests that we get some time to be able to edit the code. There are clearly some major overhauls that would need to happen. Confusion within Chapter 5.76, this is that portion of code that refers simply to vending within parks. There is some confusion in the wording. Staff did speak with the Parks and Rec Director to clarify what exactly they were getting at, and simply added some verbiage specifying that one of the items that does not allow motor vehicles is specifically disallowing them within parks. So, you'll see that change within your Attachment 2 that we provided. As far as the placement of tables for patrons, it was asked whether or not that was allowed. Currently, as it's written, tables and seating aren't allowed within the right-of-way, blocking any sort of pedestrian corridor or fire lane, basically just for mobility for pedestrians, as well as safety for everyone around. However, if there was seating provided, as long as it remained mobile with the rest of the business, it could be located on-site, as long as everything conformed to the rest of the regulations. So, as long as it wasn't impeding any sort of traffic or fire safety, they would be allowed on-site. Fire hydrant distance, again, what the necessity was to have that fire hydrant distance requirement, basically a lot of our fire hydrants are located right along, they're within city right-of-way and located very close to a lot of lot lines, so this just covers us, just in case that, you know, with mobile vendors parking typically towards the perimeter of a site, just ensuring that they're far enough away from a fire hydrant that it wouldn't potentially cause any issues. So, that was just a clarification of a lot of the points that were brought up during the last meeting, and I will also go over the public comment that was received by you all, that staff responded to, just in case there are any questions and potentially any clarification that I could head off before we move on into questions. The first portion, which is part of Chapter 5.76, which again is that vending within parks, it does state that they can't use bells, horns, whistles, noise makers of any kind. There is a portion within 5.82 that disallows audio amplification that can be audible from perimeter properties or neighboring properties. Apples and oranges, 5.76 is additional requirements for vending within parks that was put out by the Parks and Rec Department. We refer to their judgment for anything that they would like, and they did want to keep the entirety of 5.76 intact, except for any directly conflicting items, which is those that we're including within ours. So, Parks and Rec did, again, want to keep 5.76 intact as much as it could. So, but regardless, there's no real conflict here, because one is talking about specifically and only when vending within parks, and one is talking about when vending on private property that are not parks. So, 5.76, O4OD, again, those promotional activities, apples and oranges, we're not creating any sort of regulation about promoting activities when not within parks. However, Parks and Rec does not want people advertising, hawking, or promoting wares while within parks and while vending within parks, and we will, again, fall back onto their judgment of what they want within city parks, but there are no regulations like this for when vending on private property that are not parks. Let's see, E, again, this is that no motorized vehicles portion that I referred to previously. There was some confusion about what it actually said, and it is not clear. So, if you'll see in Attachment 2 at the end of that first sentence, it does specify in parks, so that is clarified there. F, let's see, in, F is actually, as you'll see in Attachment 2 for the last couple readings, is included in a strike-through, indicating that if it were to approve and continue on this manner, that portion will not exist. That was that issue that we talked about with Parks and Rec of just the conflict between Chapter 5.82 and 5.76, so that is entirely deleted. Moving on to the next section of 5.82, the definition of mobile. Again, city staff is not trying to dictate how long they can specifically be at that, but more or less how long they can be without storing their vehicles off-site. Pulling around the block and returning it does not classify as mobile, considering that we're defining it by its ability to, you know, move, and later on by where it's parked. So, it's a little bit of a, the three consecutive day rule, it's a little confusing, again, because you can vent at a certain location for more than three consecutive days. More, this is just trying to get across that the City of Laramie wants our mobile vendors to actually be mobile, and if they want to permanently set up at a site, then we can send them through the site plan process, which gives us the ability to look at the site, make sure there's adequate parking for more than one business on the site. They need to go through landscaping requirements, as our site plans require, making sure that there's accessible pedestrian ways for them to get to all the businesses. So, there's a lot of different things that are looked at when you actually are trying to establish permanently on a site. So, when we're trying to keep things mobile, we're actually ensuring that they're mobile and they can be moved. The licensing fee, I covered that briefly before, trying to operate at a net zero. Cessation and revocation, basically there is a quest that we provide email notification as well. City staff doesn't really have a problem with that. The formal notice is, you know, required to go out by mail, so that will be the formal notice, but if on the application, the mobile vendor does provide an email address that they're regularly checking and using, then we're happy to go ahead and send that out via email as well. The general requirements for fire department inspection, the fire department did explicitly request this when I went to them a second time about the fact that a lot of the portions of these mobile vending, you know, kitchens is typically what we're seeing with, they are installed by professionals, and they are inspected by professionals. However, when I brought the concept to our fire marshal, asking if they could just provide the documentation saying that everything is okay, he did request that they continue be able to actually do those inspections, because they're looking at more than just, you know, the hood and the propane system. They want to make sure that everything is attached to the vehicle properly, that there's no other fire issues that there potentially are concerns with. And because he knows what he's doing in regards to fire safety, and I do not, we go ahead and, again, default to what they would like, and they do want to actually do those inspections. So, we highly recommend that that stays in. Let's see, 5.82, O7OE, mobile vending unit storage when not in use. Again, this is that three consecutive day rule, as it's being referred to. Again, just, we want to ensure that these are actually mobile. There, again, are several different processes for establishing permanently or establishing temporarily on-site, and this does not cover them. We're creating a whole new entity with these mobile vending units. If council wants to extend that three-day limit to another reasonable timeframe, then that's more than okay, but staff does not believe that 60 days is reasonable. We have this minor temporary use, which you can apply for once every year, and again, it's for typically those things like a Christmas market, or Christmas tree lot, or auto sales lot, those types of things. Those have a 90-day time limit and need to go through planning approval, and it's entirely. So, we do have different processes that already establish this, but for a mobile vendor to not be mobile for 60 days, staff doesn't believe that that's considered mobile. So, that's opinion, our opinion on that. Let's see, O7OK, delivery operations, this is a bit of a what-if situation. If council decides that vending within the right-of-way is the way to go, and that's something you'd like to see, staff still does recommend that you not permitting delivery businesses to operate out of the right-of-way. We're looking at potentially tripling the amount of parking that's taken up by a mobile vending operation by simply having two delivery drivers located on city right-of-way. With that addition, you're talking people getting in and out of their cars at a regular frequency. It's just simply not safe for people to be milling in and about the road and delivering out of the road. We see no issue with it happening on private property, because people are out of the right-of-way and actually on private property. However, we don't believe that it's appropriate being within the city right-of-way. 5.82, O8O, mobile vending, what if someone would like a graduation party catered at a residential property? This is covered within our exemptions section, saying that, you know, a couple different A, B, and P are waived to when they're under private contract for an event and not serving the public. A graduation party would be a perfect example of one of those events, that allows them to be on a residential property and without of those zoning districts that are allowed. G, vending on private property is not exempting the operator from any permits or approval. What type of permits we're talking about here, specifically, just because someone is vending on private property does not give them the right to serve the public without a health-safety license, without being fire inspected, making sure that they're actually safe and not potentially harming the public. This simply is just that whatever permits and approvals or licenses are required, just because someone goes on private property doesn't mean they're allowed to not have those. Just like a normal restaurant is on private property, but they still need to have a commercial kitchen that's approved, and they need to be licensed to serve food. That's the same type of thing that we're getting at here. P, mobile vending within 200 feet of any school. City staff did reach out in the early portions of this to the Albany County School District, Ned Getz, and they did specifically say that they want that in place. If there were to be an event at the school, and they wanted a mobile vendor to provide their concessions or whatever have you, then they can go under that private contract, and this O8OP specifically within the exemptions section, so that that could be waived for a special event, or if they're under private contract and not serving the public. So, again, that's a part of our exemptions section. Mobile vending within the right-of-way, we've talked enough about that. Exceptions, let's see, A, may be waived for an approved special event permit. Again, this doesn't say that a special event permit is required to vend mobily on private property, simply that it gives the city staff flexibility with some portions of this 5.82, O8O, which is our general requirements, or the mobile vending on private property. It allows us to be flexible, and some of those rules can be broken with a special event permit, because we're going to be gathering all that information beforehand. It's not going to be a surprise. Portions of the special event permit allow for that flexibility that we don't see on a regular day-to-day basis. B, mobile vending within city right-of-way, same thing. We've talked about that. If you decide to go that route, then again, we just ask to be able to edit the code and not do it, just on a quick amendment change. And, let's see, for private, be waived while their vending operations under private contract for a private event and not serving the public. Simply should the mobile vendor be allowed to serve the public when on a residential property, for the same reasons that the City of Laramie doesn't allow restaurants in normal residential districts. It's the same thing. It increases pedestrian traffic, increases noise in our residential property areas, and just increases everybody milling about in residential neighborhoods, and it's not something that we see as being appropriate, just with traffic loads and pedestrian loads in those areas. So, that is why city staff made it so that they're not serving the public. They're actually under private contract and serving privately as opposed to publicly. So, with all that information thrown at you, if there's any more clarification that needs to happen, I'd be happy to answer it. We do have some of our mobile vendors here as well. I'm sure they're happy to answer any questions. If I glossed over anything that you would like me to elaborate on, I would be happy to do so.
All right, let's open to questions. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Let's start with the one, I guess, the motor vehicles in public parks during special events, that is handled under this special event permit flexibility, right? So, does every person who wants to have a motor vehicle in the park at that time have to ask for that permission, or is it granted for the event?
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, special events are handled through the city clerk and are entirely separate. Basically, the special event gives the ability to not have to follow these regular regulations. So, if there was a special event at the park, say Freedom Has a Birthday, everybody that would be there needs to get approval by the special event, as well as it'll be routed through the Parks Department, because they're the ones that are going to be ultimately handling it. So, they will see how many vehicles, what vehicles, what types of vehicles may be in a park. So, they would be able to give that approval.
I think we've had in the past also the car dealerships having, you know, showings in the park, Washington Park, I've seen this, you know, same thing at every car dealership.
That is correct. The Chapter 5.76, the vending within parks, again, it's, well, it's exclusive to vending within parks, so it's a little bit different, but Parks and Rec does have the ability to say yes or no to whether or not that's happening for those special occurrences. This is for just general day-to-day operations that that is in place.
Next item, pardon me.
Please.
Carnival's in town, you know, we have the carnival coming downtown in the summertime. I presume they all need a special permit, too. I see the inconvenience, these guys are traveling folks, you know, they come from Timbuktu to Laramie. How are they going to obtain the special permit ahead of time? Do they have to write you, or how does this work? I find that kind of cumbersome for them. Give me some explanation there.
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, so carnivals are covered within our major temporary use section of code, and has been that way since the adoption. So, I know specifically the last previous year, we get a phone call from typically the business that is managing the different carnivals, and they'll seek out the information that's required to have whatever approvals they need to. I would, I'm not 100% positive, because again, it's run through the clerk's office, but I assume they get special event permits along with needing the major temporary use permit through the Planning Division.
So, it does not obligate these traveling folks to get this ahead of time. It would be the organization- So, it does not obligate these traveling folks to get this ahead of time. It would be, be the organizer who does it?
That's correct, and the way it's been handled since they've been coming here wouldn't change. Um, there are already processes in place to, to permit that.
Okay.
City clerk, you wanted to add to the discussion on that, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, we currently have a carnival um circus license that they apply for and then it goes through the approval process. Yeah.
Thank you. All taken care of. Uh, you mentioned delivery of public property uh which takes place now. Uh, I often drive along Boulder Drive and the car dealerships, of course, park their big trucks in the middle of the road and unload their vehicles into the lots. Are they going to be impeded by this? Uh, because you said delivery on public property is permissible or not permissible? I didn't quite follow that. So, clear that up for me.
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, um, apples and oranges, um, this is specifically within the mobile vending code. Um, so it does not apply outside of it. Um, it's simply for mobile vending operations that are parked within city right-of-way and cooking within city right-of-way and then having delivery drivers come to their trucks load up or come to their truck, load up and disperse from on city right-of-way. It has no bearing on businesses receiving deliveries from the city right-of-way.
Just wanted to be sure that's the case. Uh, then I talked to the city manager earlier today. There are apparently three coffee shops, some of them immobile, some of them mobile. It's kind of unclear. Apparently, there's one in West Laramie which is sort of mobile, but not mobile or whatever. How, how are we going to handle that one? I know the one on Grand Avenue up north is fairly immobile because it's stationary, but on private property in front of a car.
Correct.
Dealership. Uh, what about the one, I guess, in West Laramie which is sort of mobile, but not mobile or whatever?
Uh, Mayor and Counselor Hanson, so the one, the one on Grand Avenue received a site plan. Um, app- they went through the site plan permitting process. Uh, they have agreements to use restroom facilities with everything um at the lot that they're at um and are established there legally permanently. The one in West Laramie you're referring to went to, came to our office and received the temporary use permit um and is still currently operating under that, um where they went through all of our approvals to ensure that they're not being detrimental to the business, that they're not potentially um impeding traffic or fire lanes um and that there's enough parking on-site to handle both the actual principal use and uh their coffee stand.
Okay. Uh, Your Honor, one last question. Uh, you have this special event permit flexibility ve- very nicely built into this thing. Uh, and this, uh, on the other hand, the not uh being able to vending on public, on public property uh seems to be sort of ironclad and strict. Uh, to my mind, you know, it would also be nice to include that in your special event permit flexibility. In other words, if somebody downtown for some reason would like to uh vend with its vehicle in the public property, why could that not be included in the special event flexibility? In other words, you say, yeah, okay, give us the location where you would like to vent because I could well see that a donut place would not like to have a donut maker parked in front of their place to be a competition. Uh, I see the problem. Uh, but you know, in general, I think, you know, in the, in, in the vending in the public place could, couldn't it be handled by special permit if you so desire? Uh, because everything else kind of is open in that special event flexibility, but you seem to be kind of ironclad on not doing it in the, in the public right-of-way.
Uh, Mayor and Counselor Hanson, I'm going to refer you to um chapter five point eight two um dot one hundred dot B. Um, it states that uh section five point eight two oh nine oh, mobile vending within city of right-of-way may be waived by city staff for the duration of an approved special event permit.
Okay, so it is.
It is within the exemption section.
Okay, so you'd have to come for an application?
Right. They would need to have an approved special event. Um, but with that, the city is going to already see where they're specifically going to be closing off streets, where they're going to be operating. Um, so therefore, the city staff would be able to, you know, exempt them from their prohibition for vending within the city right-of-way for the duration of the special event that they're clearly already doing.
And is there a three-day limit on that or?
For the duration of the special event.
For the duration of the event.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, thank you, staff, for putting all this together. I know this is, this is a lot to review and for us, I think it makes it very easy to understand. It makes it perfectly uh a lot of sense to me. Uh, I'm interested in hearing from the applicants after our discussion here to see what they have to say. But going back to the three-day time limit, I'm kind of curious where that came from. Other cities doing it that way or where did the three days come from?
Mayor and Counselor Gabriel, um, other cities have a, a much stricter timeframe than that three days. Um, during the preliminary meetings with our, with the mobile vendors in town that we had, um, they expressed interest in, in the ability to stay at a s- a site longer than a day um for those cross-promotional types of things to um promote both businesses at the same time. Um, basically to do pseudo-special events, you know, for an extended period of time. Um, with that in mind, um, city staff just believed that moving the vehicles off the lot um one night every three days um was a fair trade in order to ensure that they're actually being mobile. Um, again, I'll, I'll reiterate that the three days only requires that the vehicles be stored um at a site different than where they're vending um on an evening every three days. So, if they were to be at my house, um, Monday, they could stay Monday night. Tuesday, they could stay Tuesday night. They could be there Wednesday during the day vending. Wednesday night, it would need to be brought off-site and stored in accordance with the um storage regulations of the code. So, in theory, then they could come back Thursday morning and do the exact process over and over again. But this just ensures that things are actually being kept mobile by, you know, requiring them to move twice a week at night. Um, it was originally proposed that every night that they would need to bring it back and store it properly, but the mobile vendors desired, again, a longer timeframe. Um, we came up with three days. It could be five days um if you choose so. But some actual requirement to get them to move and not establish permanence on a site without going through the site plan process um is entirely where that came from. Uh, you'll see within your cover letter um that Fort Collins um requires a twelve-hour per day limit at the same location than they have to move. Um, they can even only be at that same location three days out of the week. Um, they are not allowed to be left there overnight at all whatsoever. Um, they did create a new term called uh stationary vendor, which happened um not too long ago, where basically it allows them to be at a location more than three times per week, but they still have that twelve-hour limit to be there vending once a day, and that's ensuring their mobility. So, that's how Fort Collins decided that they wanted to regulate the mobility of these mobile vendors is requiring them to only be at a certain location for a certain duration. Um, furthermore, they still um do not allow even these stationary vendors to spend the time uh at that location overnight unless they are the property owner and the mobile vendor owner. So, they could be at their location overnight, but they can still um only vend there twelve hours a day. So, really, in reality, this three-day limit is not all that stringent compared to everywhere else. Um, but it is just our attempt at reading, reaching some sort of compromise for being able to stay at a location for an extended duration, but still not establishing permanence.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. So, the ice cream truck that everybody grew up with, if he's got the little bells going, that's against the law?
No.
Uh, Mayor and Counselor Schuster? No, um, I'll refer you to the, let's see, let me pull up. Uh, five point eight two oh one oh um B, the neighborhood mobile food vendor. Um, anyone operating uh and selling only ready-to-eat or packaged food in individual servings is allowed to um vend within residential areas and on uh city right-of-way.
Okay, next one I, just like Klaus, I was wondering about the carnival. So, for that special event, they can be there as many days as the special events required, but our people can only be there three days? Unless we have a special per- permission of a special event. But the carnival, since it starts up Tuesday and leaves Sunday, it can be in place five days for the special event.
That's correct because they're going through that licensing process with the city, so we know exactly how long they're going to be there.
Okay. And you talked about the park because I was really wondering about Farmer's Market on Thursdays at Undine Park. So, they have to get twenty special events through Parks and Rec if they're going to do twenty weeks of.
I believe they do special events for that. That may be a question for Parks and Rec. Um, I know the Farmer's Market Friday downtown gets a special event.
Um, Undine does Thursdays at Undine Park.
Right.
A Farmer's Market.
City manager, could you clarify for us?
But the question was the Farmer's Market in Undine, is it permitted through the park permitting process?
Through the park permitting process, so they get twenty of them or whatever they need from Todd and go from there. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And you talked about deliveries because I know there's a, a, a company at Third and Grand and they park a semi right in the middle of the street with barely a lane on each side while they unload to the restaurant. That's okay, since they're a permanent one. And then I want to know on schools, is it two hundred feet of the building or two hundred feet of the property line?
Property.
Property line, okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I just want to say I think um the three days is quite generous for a mobile business. And thank you for all your hard work on this.
Any other questions? Counselor Henry?
Um, well, I was wondering about on page four of attachment one, five point eight zero or five point eight two point zero eight zero B, the allowed hours of operation. And I'm not sure that we really need to have allowed hours of operation. There's only three hours in twenty-four that they're not allowed to operate. And I would just like to see B stricken and I would, I would like to make a motion to strike B from five point eight two point zero eight zero and then letter the rest accordingly.
Before we have a second.
Can I have a question?
Hold on just a second. I was hoping to do questions and hear from the public before we started to do amendments.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
So, just know I'm going to be making the motion.
Fair enough. We have an amendment.
I'll draw for now.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, other questions for city staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Connor, for all the information.
City manager had something.
Did you have something?
Uh, nothing terribly important, but thank you. Um, I was just going to clarify, when we have serial events like Farmer's Market at Undine or downtown, they just give us the dates and we approve them for the season after we review everything. So, it's not like they have to pull twenty permits per se. Just thought I'd correct it because we're not, we're not quite that bureaucratic. So, we try to make it easy as we can.
So, I'd like to open the floor to any of the mobile vendors that would like to speak. Remember, you have to introduce yourself for the record and when you're all done, you have to sign the sheet behind the city clerk.
Uh, my name's Trent White, so owner of Double Dubs and the president of the Food Truck Alliance. Um, the first time, the first time we got the ordinance, when we sat down with the planning, we got an email of what they were proposing. This last time, we didn't get anything. So, I'm a little unprepared from what they just talked to you about. So, I don't know, I didn't see that sheet of paper what- whatsoever. Um, I just saw the response of what they did um to our response, basically. So, I didn't see the, the updated one that they just did. So, the first time I did get an email from them, second time I did not. Um, some of the stuff, uh, they worked with us on some things, you know, like adding, adding that additional language into the uh school district zones, you know, um, if we can park there within two hundred feet, um, as long as it's approved through school district. Um, three-day rule still, I'm still working with businesses all over the town. Uh, it's kind of hard for me just to pack up shop and then leave for three days and then come back, you know? Me promoting the businesses, I'm going to be there permanent, you know, for a, a longer period of time. Um, yeah, just like I said, I'm still kind of thrown off because I didn't get the ordinances this last time they did. So, I'm not as prepared as I should.
Let, let me clarify for you. All the information that we have and that they discussed is always available online on the city websites.
No, I know. I just, I just was a little thrown off because I thought, you know, the first time I got an email from them and the second time I did not get an email from them.
Usually that stuff is posted by Thursday or Friday morning, the meeting before.
That's fine. Uh, it's probably my fault. Um, some of the other stuff, you know, uh, we're not Fort Collins, we're Laramie and stuff, you know, so it's just kind of a, a thing that we need to discuss to see what we can do as a community and stuff to move forward with everything. So, um, yeah. Any questions from you guys or anything?
Do we have any questions for the mobile vendor? Any questions?
Oh.
Please, Counselor Gabriel.
Trent, can you give me an idea of what you would like to see on the, the mobile three days? You talked about that. I'm just kind of curious.
Well, yeah, a lot of times, you know, I'm working with businesses and stuff. They want me to be there longer and everything, you know, promoting their business and stuff, you know? I, I, what if there becomes a scenario where they want me to be there all summer, you know, and they're paying me to be there to promote their business and everything, you know? So, it's, it's just a hard thing to do. I am mobile. I'm not putting up on jack stands. You know, we're, we're not putting it on jack stands, you know? If it was on jack stands, I can understand how it would be a permanent, you know, place. I wouldn't be able to move, but I could move all the time. So, it, it, it's, it's a hard thing. I mean, they want three days. You know, I, it's hard because, you know, if the business owner wants me to stay there a month, you know, it's just kind of a, a hard balance that we can't really see eye to eye on. So.
Other questions? I have one for you, if I can. Um, so, we've kind of got some clarification tonight that we have our, our mobile vending ordinance. We have a, um, a minor temporary use procedure you can go through and, and then a permanent site plan. So, if somebody wanted to be there for all summer, would it be possible for you to go through that, that minor temporary use?
Yeah, it would be possible.
Possible, okay.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. City manager?
Mayor, um, I just wonder if Eric could clarify for um Trent whether I, my understanding is there, Trent, there are no changes to the ordinance on second reading as was proposed on first. Um, so Eric, if I'm wrong, please speak up, but I just wanted to assure you that.
It just, it sounded like some of the languages and stuff were different and everything, so it just seemed like it was different.
Understand. Well, that was a lot of information.
It was. And a lot of the times, you know, this is a huge thing that we're trying to propose, you know, and it almost seems like it's being pushed through really, really fast, you know? So, I wouldn't mind if it got pushed out even further than this next reading, so.
Well, I can assure you, there are no changes from last time. But the, the information provided is very dense and in part to help provide context.
That's a lot of stuff, so.
But we can, we can make sure to let you know if we make changes. Eric, do you want to add something?
Just to clarify, um, there was a change um on five point eight two one one oh, simply removing section A um because it was a, a miss in the last time we changed it. There's not supposed to be an A if there's not a B. Um, so we removed A, but no other verbiage changed. Um, and everything was posted on the cityoflermy.org slash mobile vending. Um, and everything was updated with the agenda as per usual.
Thank you very much. Counselor Henry?
That reminds me, I had one more question.
For Mr. Wetzel?
Uh-huh, yeah, no, for our planner.
Apologies. Mr. Connor, can you?
I just wondered why it's not permitted in ag. I mean, it seems like it should, that mobile vending should be permitted in ag because if you have workers that want to eat lunch or dinner as, you know, I don't know. I just think it should be permitted.
Mayor and Counselor Henry, uh, typically um with ag, we're seeing those really large lots and, you know, typically exterior of town. Um, we do want to attempt to allow for some sort of ADA accessibility and typically on those lots, you probably wouldn't see that. Um, however, if that's a change that you would like to make Um, however, if that's a change that you would like to make to allow it as a permitted use on private property within the ag district, um, we don't see any sort of issue with that.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I'd like to open it back open to any, uh, any other mobile vendors that would like to speak tonight? Why don't you, please come forward. Thank you. And, uh, welcome, if you can introduce yourself for the record, and then when you leave, there's a sheet on the table if you can sign in for us. Thank you.
I'm Ashley Wilson, I'm co-owner of The Dude LLC. Um, we have three trailers that we consider event trailers. Um, we operate the end of June through the first of September. Um, and we operate in, like, the four surrounding counties of Albany County. Um, we'll do, uh, special events such as the fairs, Freedom Has a Birthday, um, Chug Water Chili Cook Off. Um, so, we're pretty mobile and we, we see a lot of different events. Um, the ones that, the concerns that I have with the proposals, um, is the special events. I would like to know how I know if an event that I'm going to has applied for that special event. Is there, is something that I need to do, or do I need to go look somewhere to make sure that they are under that special event? Or am I just making assumptions?
Um, each applicant that has received a permit, a special event permit, is required to have that permit on site.
Okay.
Um, so, you could request to see it, and they should be able to show it to you.
So, like Albany County Fair, do, is that a special permit?
That's separate, 'cause that's on their property, so that's...
I, I think our city clerk could, could answer a lot of those, uh, questions before you provide you with information.
Welcome to call-in, yeah.
Okay. Um, my other concern is with the parking. Um, we usually have two trailers between July and August. Um, we park them on a side street. Um, it's not occupied in the three years that I've been there. Um, so, we park it on that side street out of the way so that we are not harboring any of our neighbors. Um, the way this is written, um, we would be allowed to have one vehicle adjacent to our property, and I feel like that would be more of an eyesore, more of a nuisance to our neighbors than parking them out of the way on the side street. Um, so, I would like to see less restrictions on that. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Please come. Is there anybody else that would like to offer comment? Please come up.
I'm Carrie Wasal. I am an employee of Double Dubs and also the wife of Trent. Um, so, I only have, like, two things specifically. Um, so, the three-day, um, you can only park at one location for three days. We tend to plan our schedule seven days. You guys know that we have the food truck, the double-decker bus, we also have a generator, porta-potty. We try to be completely mobile. Because we only do it seven days at a time, nobody's complained about being at a single location for seven days. So, taking that three days, extending it to seven days would be nice, because then we're not scrambling every three days to move all this equipment. It causes a pose for one of us to get injured, hooking things up, taking them apart, moving them around town, coming back. That's for our end of things, as far as for the town. Seven days, we're still clearly mobile, you know, we'll move from location to location every seven days. I don't think seven days is unreasonable for this town. It is small, you know what I mean, drive from one end to the other. It's small, seven days seems reasonable versus three days for a larger town where there's more turnover with people and businesses and all of that. Um, the other thing was, um, something about the fire inspections. Yes, we agree that the initial fire inspection should be signed off by the fire department. That makes sense, they are the experts. I feel like a third-party inspector should be adequate for a secondary inspection following up if no changes have been made to the setup, the equipment, or anything else. Um, and I do believe Trent spoke to somebody within the fire department, they agreed with that as well. It takes time off of them, that's what third-party inspectors are for, they're licensed and certified to do that. So, if we could either have somebody from the fire department here representing that to determine that that is in fact the way they wanna go, one way or the other, that would be nice, rather than us saying, well, they said, versus we think that they said this to us. We need that clarified by the experts. So, like we said, we're not, we're not debating having the fire department sign off initially. They are the experts, they need to know. But then the secondary, it makes sense that they can do it. That's what we pay them for. So, those are my two things that I felt were worth kind of bringing up.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come forward? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and the city council. My name's Ocean Andrew, co-owner of On the Hook Fish and Chips Food Truck. And first of all, forgive my terrible public speaking skills, but...
You'll do just fine.
All right. Well, I love this state and this city because it's an incubator for entrepreneurship. It was very easy for us to start our business here because there isn't a crazy amount of red tape currently for us to cut through to start a business. We're still heavily regulated by the health department, we went through fire inspections already in the city of Laramie, and currently, none of the vendors are causing any problems in the city. And I'd just like to express my opposition for the bill as a whole because of issues I've had in other places. We are only currently in Laramie about one day a week, because our business model is based on tra- traveling. We go, we've gone as far north as Cody, Wyoming, and as far south as Lone Tree, Colorado. We've served in Denver, and it took me, well, the first year we started, I guess, I planned to serve in both Wyoming and Colorado, but it took me an entire calendar year to be able to serve in Colorado. And had I started there originally and not done anything with Wyoming, I probably would have gone out of business trying to comply with all their regulations and go through everything that they wanted me to do. And being here and being able to make money in Wyoming allowed us to have enough time to get through all their regulations, and we, I like Wyoming better, we do better in Wyoming, and it's fun to travel to all these small towns that just let us come, let us set up, and serve really good food to all their people who don't have options in town, because these small towns cannot support, like, a fish and chips restaurant all the time. But when we come to Rawlins every once in a while, people love it, and we have lines thirty minutes long of people coming to get food. And I wanna be able to keep Laramie open so that vendors from other places could come to Laramie, set up, have the same flexibility as if they were here during a special event. I don't understand why people who aren't in, like, doing some sort of special event don't have the same flexibility as people who are coming to Jubilee Days. We help a lot of the businesses that we set up at, Fresh Flower Fantasy, they love having us there because we draw people to their parking lots, and I get calls all the time from people in Laramie and all the towns we go to, just wanting us to set up in their parking lots. And I think all these regulations would make Laramie really unattractive for a lot of vendors, and I think the entire thing should be completely thrown out.
Thank you very much, and you did very well.
Oh, thank you.
Don't forget to sign in, sign in. Is there any other public comment on this? Okay, so, let's go back to council for discussion, and I'll go to Counselor Henry first.
Yes.
She has some amendments.
Yes, so, I would, let me find it.
Let me pull my thing back up.
In attachment A on, on page four.
Okay.
I move to delete B from five point eight two point zero eight zero.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
So, is that attachment one?
Attachment one.
And what is it again?
Page four, top.
Five point eight two point zero eight zero.
Mobile vending on private property.
That's the name of the thing, and so, B is allow, allowed hours of operation.
Mayor, if I may...
Just, yeah, just a second, are we all clear on the amendment? Okay.
Um, city staff would re- would request that B two be left within there for, um, the time restrictions when within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential, uh, zoning district, um, simply because a lot of our mobile vendors do have generators and things that create potentially a lot of noise that would be disruptive to any residences in the general vicinity.
Counselor McKinney?
But the mobile vendors, and I realize they know that the noise ordinance is from seventy...
You too, yep.
That's what you're talking about, is because of the noise ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, so, if they know that the noise ordinance is there, wouldn't that take over for that part?
City manager, sorry, I was gonna let you finish.
No, that's all right.
Mayor and Counselor...
Or city attorney.
There, yeah, and Bob, feel free, um, certainly Counselor McKinney, you're correct, um, after eight P.M., the noise should be done away with or eliminated, right? That noise shouldn't exist, but even during the permissible period, if it exceeds a certain decibel level, it can be considered in violation. And I think that the council is aware that that noise ordinance is a little bit imperfect, and we are planning to revise it. So, I, I guess I would say, I agree a hundred percent with what Eric is saying, through the noise ordinance, perhaps revising it in the future, you could make it more enforceable and make it such that a residential neighborhood would be less burdened potentially by generators there, but right now, what you have in code, in my opinion, is insufficient to protect that residential neighborhood. Um, so, for now, at least, I would agree with Eric. Bob, do you wanna add anything?
City attorney?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, um, I, clearly I have no opinion on what you should do with B two, but I will say that the, I mean, no policy opinion, but, um, a bright line in, in these, if you, if you're doing a new ordinance like this, a bright line is helpful for the city attorney's office, because then we don't have to gin together some, look at the noise ordinance, and look at this ordinance, and this and that. So, it's easier for the city attorney to, to say, here's when you can operate where.
Counselor McKinney?
Yeah, please?
Yep, please, sorry.
I, no, no, I just wanted to ask, Trent, what time do you guys close at night?
Maybe from nine to ten.
Nine to ten o'clock at night, okay.
Kelsey Schuster?
Okay, um, the maker of the ordinance, I suggest they insert something in there. If they remove B one, then they have no limit on hours of operation. I understand what you're trying to do, but I don't want it to go freewheel. And two is on a residential area where, where he's set up right now is not even close to any residence anywhere, it's two blocks away. And I don't wanna say it's good, bad, or indifferent, but several of these vendors go down to bar areas, hoping that the patrons will go, oh, I'm hungry right now, and they don't serve anything here at Cowboy. I'm gonna go outside, gonna grab a sandwich, and I'll come back in. So, if we take this away from there, you're taking a majority of their evening business away from them. So, um, even though I've never done this at a bar, I have seen many, many, many people do it, and they have stated things to me on that. So, I know that's why the six A.M. to three A.M. is there, the three A.M. is to catch the bar, the six A.M. is to catch the people going to work. So, I know why both ends of that are there, I agree, they're only shut down three hours, my goodness, I hope it's not the same person that got a whopping three hours of sleep and went back to work. But, uh, I understand the hours on this, and if you do change something, 'cause this is, I believe that one is made for business areas and two is for residential. So, I hope the maker of the ordinance inserts something for business areas.
In number one.
In number one.
Mr. Connor, did you have something to add to the discussion?
Just to clarify, um, referring to the D.C. district, it's not considered a residential district, it's downtown commercial. Um, so, the two, if it were to remain, um, would not include the, the D.C. district, okay?
Vice Mayor?
No, I'm fine.
You're good?
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Schuster?
Well, the motion is to strike two, and if we do, then they, they can operate any hours. I'm not sure that that's bad. I don't think if I had a business, I'd wanna be open at four o'clock in the morning, but that's up to them, we have places that are open twenty-four hours a day. I would think it would be unsafe from three A.M. to six A.M. many times, but, uh, because we, we do have police that, you know, are out trying to, at three A.M. because the bar's closing, but, eh, to me, if that's their desire to be open twenty-four hours and they have the staff to do it, I'm not opposed to that. So, if we strike this, I guess it says they can be open anytime.
Kelsey Schuster?
I don't know good, bad, or indifferent, because I'm not having to close a bar in so many years, it's not even fun. Guess I'm getting old, but, um, I, I actually think it's a good thing for them to be able to be down there, if somebody gets some food in them while they're drinking, I think's actually a good idea, but I kinda like the six A.M. to three A.M., and I don't know if any of the vendors have an issue with this either, 'cause I don't think they do.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna open up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this amendment? It would be to strike for, since you guys don't have the ordinance sitting in front of you, it's to strike the hours of operation, and it would also strike, uh, the requirement that when located within a hundred and fifty feet of the residential zoning district, the hours of operation shall be between seven A.M. and ten P.M.
We would strike that too?
Yes, so, it would strike those two.
Right now, it's to get rid of everything.
Oh.
So, they can be open anytime.
Yes.
Right, right now, the, the motion reads to strike B from eight point, or five point eight two zero eight zero.
That's correct.
Strike B in its entirety.
Right, that is correct. I'll give them just a second. Do you have any public comment on this amendment? Please come forward.
Um, I am in favor of deleting the whole thing. Um, I, the hours don't really affect me at all, but when I'm looking at this hundred and fifty feet of a residential zoning, I'm thinking more of like those coffee shops, having them be, have the flexibility to be open earlier than the seven A.M. So, thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment on this? Okay, I'll come back to council for discussion.
Um, I, I'd like to, uh, just make a quick comment, and I don't feel very strongly about the hours, I think that there's very few that would operate between six A.M. and three A.M. that weren't on a special event for Jubilee Days or something, but I, I don't have strong feelings. But on B two, I would like to keep that. I think that we have some business districts and businesses that are up against neighborhoods, and we've already seen a lot of complaints about noise, and obviously, we're redoing the noise ordinance, and I'd like to give some protection. I don't have a problem with the business being open, but I, I would have a problem with a very loud generator being going all night, uh, right up against a, a house. I don't think that that's fair to the neighborhood. So, a- as it stands, if it deletes both of them, I won't support it, but I could be rethought for the, the hours of operation.
Counselor Henry?
So, I, um, I, I'm not gonna change it, because I think that our noise ordinance is gonna take care of that, um, in residential zoning districts, and I don't think anybody really is gonna pull up in a residential area a hundred feet away and start up their generator at three o'clock in the morning, I just don't think it's gonna happen, so, um, I just think we gotta leave it up to the vendors.
Vice Mayor?
I, I think we might be a little, sorry to disagree, but I think we might be a little naive on this one. I mean, I think they could pull up and, and I would be very concerned and very worried about our residential district, and based on our work session having to do with that noise ordinance, I find even our discussion to be slightly inadequate, let alone the current, sorry, let alone the current ordinance. So, um, I'm with the mayor on this one, I think, I think we need to, to really keep our residents, uh, in mind, uh, when we're, when we're talking about a, a potentially very loud generator going at three A.M. or, or all hours of the night.
So, Mayor, would our, would our noise ordinance not take care of that?
I think, um, the city manager commented on it before, uh, city attorney, could you clarify that again? I think um the city manager commented on it before, uh city attorney, could you clarify that again?
Yes, Mayor, uh coun- counselor, um you know, we had that long discussion a few weeks ago, where when a cha- the noise ordinance right now with decibels, we can't do it, we don't have the equipment. And then, so then we get into the this area of citizen complaints, or if the police are there to hear it, it's hard, and and so uh that's why in in the proposed or noise ordinance, as I said, you will see, you know, we will have some bright lines on several activities. You'll set bright lines, because those are easy to enforce. You know, no power tools after X P M. That's enforceable, um eat more easily enforceable. But to to have a general, to to, just less easily enforceable, to to have the general noise ordinance cover the operation of a business. It's doable. I mean, we we, I think our police force tries, um and citizens try to police that too, but as you've seen over the years, that's harder.
Counselor Schuster, did you have something?
Um yes, let's say this does pass, this for the city attorney. If this does pass, could someone else then make amendment to bring B two back on the?
To B.
It might be, uh it might be easier to amend the amendment at this point.
That's right, do one and two separately.
Counselor Shumway.
All right, just a clarification before I make my comment. Right now, the motion on the floor is to eliminate in five eight point eight two oh eight oh two, both A and B, or just to eliminate A?
B one.
B one and two.
B one.
In its entirety.
Section B.
So just that one and that one.
Okay, um my comment is this, if we have a three-day proposed location of a vending truck or a mobile vending vehicle, they don't run their generators necessarily just to serve food. They run their generators to provide, keep frozen food frozen, they run the generators to keep lighting there for security from vandalism. They run their generators also to heat when it's necessary. And that doesn't mean they're going to turn it off just because they're not open for business, they're going to keep it running all night. So I don't know that saying that during operation hours, six A M. to three A M., I don't think they're going to turn their generators off. We probably just need to make sure that they're not, that the generators are are not going to violate the noise ordinance, or else that they locate them away from residential areas where they would cause a a problem with keeping people up at night. I I don't know that we're solving anything by saying their hours of operation have got to be changed, you know, or eliminated, or whatever we're trying to do. I think we need to think through this before we finally make a vote on this. It just doesn't make sense to me that saying that when they're operating, they're noisy, and when they're not operating, when they're not selling, they're they're not noisy, because they'll be noisy twenty-four hours a day if they're running a generator.
Counselor McKinney.
Want to ask a vendor a question?
Please.
When you aren't operating and doing business, aren't you plugged into regular electricity?
We are.
And so it's ran completely, your freezers and everything are ran off electricity, no, no generators?
We have a, yeah.
Okay, how, you guys' generators, you got, they shut off for your, you plugged into regular uh household one ten?
We, when we're not operating, we don't have a generator.
Okay, but did, but you have another power source other than?
Yeah, we can plug them in.
Okay, that's, okay, that's all I wanted to know. I just wanted to clarify that that's what they do during the night, that's what they do, they plug them in and they turn the generators off.
Did you have a comment? And we have to talk just about the amendment, so just about removing this.
Yes, this is just about the noise ordinance thing. I think if the noise ordinance did have a decibel level, I'm not arguing it. We have kids, four of them, all under the ages of, they're all younger than eight, four of them. So we, of course, understand the residential stuff. I would be livid if somebody was running their generator and keeping my three-year-old up, because she is a crabby Appleton. So we understand that.
I have one of those.
So my thing would be, so I was in construction before moving up here. I've been in construction for a long time. One thing that our guys did for safety was you can have an app on your phone and it regulates the decibels, so you can know before OSHA gets there, do we need hearing protection or do we not? That same type of application could be used in this as well. If we do set a decibel level for the generators, pat, like, say, it can be at this decibel level until this time. Beyond that time, it can only be to this, because it's the evening hours, or something like that. We have a generator, we have a quiet generator, that's a smaller one that's on the food truck. I think it's noticeably pretty quiet compared to some of the other vendors in town. We also have our big diesel generator, which now runs quieter than it ever has before. So I mean, there are ways to look at this, so almost having a decibel range within limits, I'm not sure what generators tend to run at decibel level-wise, but there are ways of looking at it and checking and making sure we are compliant. So we don't have some Joe Schmo drive by and say, nope, this is too loud. We can come back and protect ourselves and say, you know what, it is within this decibel range that's permitted for this timeframe. That way, the residents are protected, that way, the vendors are protected, and there's documenting proof to be able to say we are within range. So that's that's my experience from some other background.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. City manager.
Here, if I can just add a little bit to the conversation, I think that that um our planner has noted generator as one example of the disruptions that a business activity in a residential zone may cause. Um so I, this conversation is good, but I think we're we're looking too narrowly at the at the issue, so I want to offer for for your contemplation a couple different things. As the public speaker just said, and I'm a mom too, and I remember vividly having young children. People, in my opinion, living in a residential zone, and remember, that can be straight residential, it can be your downtown commercial, where you have as many residents living above business storefronts. In fact, more in the downtown commercial residents living above business storefronts than actual business uh entities on the main levels. And in addition, uh think about areas where you are allowing residential over business overlays, like D C., but potentially other places in the community. So in my experience, those folks in their residential environment have a much higher expectation of sort of neighborhood peace and tranquility or something like that. Businesses pulled up across the street from you, the generator probably is the noise component, but you have cars driving up, you have people getting out of cars, slamming doors, you may have people queued up in line who are maybe it's three in the morning and they're getting that food that you're referencing, Counselor Schuster, and they're a little loud. Uh maybe they're having a little too much fun. So I just urge you to think about all of those complications and how you might feel if that were across the street from you, because I'll be candid, I I, which direction you go on this is totally your call, but I can tell you, the first call I anticipate is when one of these trucks wants to cozy up to a residential district, and maybe because it's by a park and there's going to be an event there or something, and so they're going to have a really legitimate business case to want to be there, and we're going to get calls from the residents. What the heck, why is this business activity going on in my neighborhood where I have such a, again, this higher expectation of of peace? You know, so anyway, I just offer that for consideration, and whatever you approve, we'll deal with it accordingly.
I've never heard a drunk, loud person.
No.
Is there any other discussion from council on this, before we go to a vote on the amendment? Counselor Henry.
Okay, I would be willing to amend my
Amendment.
motion.
Okay.
To um only strike one from B.
To strike B one?
Yes.
Second agrees.
Second agrees. So the amendment has been changed uh to only strike B one, only the hours of operation. Any further, Counselor Schuster.
And I just want this stated, this is in a business district, this has zero to do with residential. So like she said, I hate to say it, someone living upstairs and across the street in the Buckhorn Bar may still have to deal with something a little later at night.
Is there any other discussion on this? All right, clarifies, clerk, we're going to vote on the amendment to strike B one only. Roll call, please. Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikis absent. Shumway?
No.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's six yeses, two nos, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you. That amendment carries. That is now part of the ordinance.
May I do one more?
Please, Counselor Henry.
Uh, may I make a motion to add in five point eight two point one one zero, if we could put a P in ag?
Sorry, I'm getting there.
It's on the very last page of attachment one.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor McKinney. And to refresh everybody's memory, this would allow uh the mobile vending operations to be permissible in the ag district. Uh Counselor Schuster.
I have a really weird question, and wouldn't that basically be out in the county and?
No, well, this is only for the city, this is a city.
We have ag areas in the city.
Yeah, I just looked on the zoning map. Not very much, but.
Mr. Connor?
Mayor and council, um there is some ag, just very, very little, so.
Between here and the airport.
That's true, that is.
Good point.
University, it's university property, I don't think we'd even regulate them.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Could you clarify, is this a section G. of one hundred?
Uh, this is section.
No, it's five point eight two point one one zero, on the very last page of attachment one. We're putting a P., which is permitting mobile vending in the ag district.
This is under the exception section, right?
No, on the very last page.
Oh, 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 okay, section one, okay, got it.
Sorry, I apologize, technical problem.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
I'm current.
You're you're apparently current, with a different version. All right, any other discussion on this? Is there anything else from city staff on this amendment? Okay, s- uh any public comment on on this amendment? City clerk, can you do a roll call, please? Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikis absent, Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you, that amendment carries and is now part of the main ordinance. All right, continuing discussion. Counselor Gabriel.
I would like to offer an amendment, if I could, please. This is section five dash eighty-two dash, I'm sorry, point zero seven zero, and it's item number three. On E. Concerning mobile vending units shall not be stored overnight at vending locations for more than three consecutive days. I would like to change that to seven consecutive days.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway.
So what page is that?
Uh, page three.
Page three.
Does everybody find it?
Page three?
Yep. Okay.
It's the second three under that.
There you go. Got that right.
All right, uh discussion.
I've got a question.
Vice Mayor.
So is this on private property?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is, this is changing it from three days to seven days on private property.
Well, it's.
Mr. Connor, can you clarify?
There is no public property.
Certainly. Uh, Mayor and Council, um, yes. Currently, I mean, you cannot vend when not on private property, so this is entirely based upon where the vehicle is going to be stored overnight. Currently, you can store it overnight at vending location for no more than three consecutive days. Whereas this would change that to being stored overnight at vending location for no more than seven consecutive days.
Please. So help me clarify, so the spots that I'm concerned about are the downtown spots near the parks, where they could potentially park next to the Railroad Depot Park, as well as the little park on the corner of First and Grand.
First Street Plaza.
The First Street Plaza. So we could, if we vote yes on this, we could potentially have a mobile vending truck sitting on the corner of First and Grand for seven days?
Mr. Connor?
Mayor and Counselor Pierce, uh in theory, if they were to get a special event permit for seven days, this doesn't specify whether or not it's on private or public property, because public property is disallowed. But if they were to be allowed by the city to vent on public property for, say, seven days, then yes, this doesn't specify whether or not they, it just says stored at vending location. So they, if they were allowed to be at a vending location that were, say, out in front of a park for seven days, then yes, in theory, they could leave the vehicle there for up to seven days overnight.
Snow, wind, rain?
Yes. If they were allowed by the city to be there for that extended period of time.
So I might, let me dig a little deeper, or maybe I'm just a little too dense here tonight, but it is my understanding that we are or will be allowing mobile trucks to park next to, mobile trucks to park next to parks.
No, it's on private property. Because it's not allowed in the right of way.
Mr. Connor, I think it would help if you would clarify, there's an exception for the right-of-way adjacent to a city park with approval from the Parks and Rec Department. So would that, the exception currently says Parks and Rec Department approval shall be given for specific days, date, and times. So would they be entitled to that seven-day consecutive overnight, or could Parks Department overrule that?
That's correct. In in order for them to legally be there, it would need to be, they could be left overnight if Parks and Rec were to give approval for those seven days. So if the Parks and Rec Department says, yes, you can vend outside of the park twenty-four hours a day for these seven days, you're allowed to be there, then that would supersede our disallowment for them being in the right-of-way, and it would still fall within them being at that vending location for seven days. If it were left at three days, it would still be potentially the same situation, but the Parks and Rec approval would need to be given for twenty-four hours a day for three days for them to be able to leave it overnight. So generally, you'll be seeing this type of thing on private property, and it rarely would ever occur on public property, unless Parks and Rec gave the approval for them to be vending at the park location for that entirety of the span.
Okay, so, okay, I would just hope that our Parks Department would not do that, I think that's really unfair for other businesses, I mean, especially in those key locations downtown. I think there absolutely should be a a twenty-four-hour turnaround at those particular locations. I don't have a problem with them sitting on private property, but those park locations are problematic for me for really any more than twenty-four hours. I mean, I would like to see business A. there on Friday night, business, different business B. there on Saturday, different business C. there on Sunday, different business Monday, that type of thing, in those spots downtown. I know we don't have that many businesses, but that would be my preference for those key locations.
City attorney.
And I don't, uh, Mayor and Counselor, I don't mean to interrupt, but as we, as we're going through this code, I, as I hear this concern, Counselor, I s- uh what what I prefer to do, just to save time, is for us then to, if this amendment is passed, that it's seven days instead of three, that allow us time to go through this code before th- third reading to see how this all tracks through.
Okay.
Parks and Rec permit, uh because I I sort of hate to do. The Parks and Rec permit, uh, because I, I sort of hate to do that on the fly.
City Manager, please.
And I guess if you, if you express to us your intent that the seven-day not be applicable when adjacent to a public park, that's what we can, we can go through this for and bring you back suggestions as to how to accomplish that where we feel confident.
Okay, well, I'm only one of nine, eight tonight, but
Sure.
Um, yeah, that's, that's my, that, those particular locations are, are of concern for me. Private property, I think, I don't know, when does the, when is the trigger for when we need, when these establishments should get a temporary license? Is it 60 days? Is it 30 days? Is it 14 days to be in one spot?
Uh, Mayor and Council, just real quickly, there are other, there are other stipulations within this E that would need to be met regardless of where they're parked. Um, one of them is to be parked illegally, so, um, as well as where they're allowed to be stored, so, um, we may be covered in the event of that seven days in which it would not stipulate the ability to be there outside of a park depending on the exact verbiage within 1, 2, and 4, so I may have misspoken, um, but there are other, there are potentially other fail safes where it may not potentially cause an issue. Um, but directly to your other question, um, currently, mobile food vendors aren't a part of our minor temporary use, um, because nothing has existed about to them in our code. Um, so, right now, there is no triggering of when or when not that could happen, how long they have to be there to fall into something like that. Um, that is something that could be explored, but, um, as it stands right now, you, there's nothing within the minor temporary use section that specifically says, like, food truck or mobile vendor or anything like that within that code section because they don't exist within our code.
Okay. Councilor McKinney?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Councilor Schuster?
Okay, uh, I'm gonna whip a really good one on you since we're talking this seven days. Let's, we're gonna pick on double dubs even, I'm gonna pick on them because I know him personally and I don't feel bad about picking.
Hold on, let's not, let's not pick on any personal businesses.
Um, let's say that he comes to you and says, I'd like a temporary permit because this business has asked me to be here one month. So he would come in and apply for a temporary permit to be there one month. Otherwise, if this would pass, he could legally just go set up there seven days as long as after the seventh day, he has moved it to a good storage facility and then could bring it back the next morning again and continue another seven days. Would that be the two options he would have to be there?
Mr. Connor?
If it were passed as is, he could still do that seven-day option, but it would be every three days. This simply extends those three days to seven.
Right.
That's the proposed amendment, that's all that would do. So that in itself wouldn't change. Um, and again, currently, there's nothing about mobile vendors within our minor temporary use, so we could potentially finagle something like that. We would rather put it within this section of code to allow for the, potentially those stipulations, um, because we're creating it new.
So there is no temporary permit like you're doing for the coffee vendor out in West Laramie?
Correct, because Coffee Hut is within one of those, like
Okay.
It's, it's slightly different. Because we don't have verbiage for what is happening.
A temporary vending permit you could do for 30 days. There is.
It would, it's 90. Minor temporary uses are 90 days, yes.
He could potentially come for a temporary vending unit for 90 days then?
No.
I'm asking because I want to make sure that I have this.
Let's, let's try to get all on the same page here. So I think what we're asking, we have this seven-day, if we amend it, they would be there for seven days.
Correct.
And then the other, are we jumping all the, the next option if they want to be there longer is a site plan for permanency? Is there something in the middle for temporary use where they could come and set up for 30 days without having to move their vehicle?
Special event?
Yes, in theory, someone could do a special event and be there for that long, if it was stipulated in that timeframe and it was approved by the city, yes. Um, currently, there is what's called a minor and major temporary use, which is things like the coffee shacks, like the tree vending parking lot, like those types of things. But because mobile vendors, that entity, that concept does not exist within Laramie Municipal Code, it is not a part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's not, just, it doesn't exist. Um, if you want to explore a 30-day or whatever day, we would recommend it getting put within the mobile vending portion of code as opposed to being interjected within the minor temporary uses, um, because those are types of things where you do it once and done.
And they're not mobile. Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Honor. Just a question to clarify something. Whether we make it three days or seven days could both be overruled by the special event permit, right?
Yes.
So, it doesn't really make much difference to me whether it's three days or seven days because the special event permit makes it redundant anyway. Uh, so, I don't care. If you like seven days better, fine with me. If you like three days better, for those folks back there, if you are not happy with three days, apply for a special event permit and have it sit there for seven days. Or a year, or whatever.
It has to be a special event. It shouldn't just be an invented.
City Clerk, could you clarify what the requirements are for a special event permit for our information?
Yeah, a special event permit is defined as an event that is held on public right-of-ways, like streets, sidewalks, alleys, that's, parks, yeah. That's what the special event permit is designed to do, is permit the use of our public land for a specified amount of time for a specific event.
Specific event.
We're talking about private property.
Well, then set it up for seven days on public property.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor right now to change the three days to seven days to modify, uh, E3 under 5.82.070. I'd like to go to the public, is that okay? All right. Mr. Russell has been standing very patiently and I appreciate it. To the amendment, sir.
Uh, just to clarify some stuff that you were talking about, um, through the Parks and Rec and everything, they, they specifically give us timeframes and we work with them timeframes of when we can park, uh, we'll stay down at the First Street Plaza. Uh, it's anywhere from 4:00 to 10:00, 5:00 to 9:00, and then they want us out of there. So, we, we work with the Parks and Rec Department of about what time we can be at parks if we pull those permits and everything, so. And then with the special event permit, I think, uh, it costs money to pull those, correct?
Uh, the special event permit in itself does not have a fee currently.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that, we work through Parks and Rec, so we're not going to be down there 24 hours because they set up regulations and stuff of what time we can't be down there.
Councilor McKinney?
So to all the vendors, all I have to ask is, would you rather have three or seven day?
How about eight?
A lot of things is.
They're just asking to be able to be able to work a full.
Hold on, we need to be recognized on the floor right now, the public has the floor.
You guys are good. Um, a lot of things is, I have a lot of, uh, deal with a lot of private property owners, they're upset, I wish they were here tonight. They don't like being, having us be regulated on their property, you know, so it, it's a hard thing even with that seven-day per, you know, seven-day ordinance that you guys are, or amendment that you guys are trying to do, um, they, they don't like that kind of regulation that you're trying to put on them, you know, so, but if something has to be there, it has to be there, so.
Vice Mayor?
So when you say they don't like the regulation, you're not talking about, like, the fire inspection and
No, not that, we're just talking about the overnight.
Talking about the length of time you can actually sit on their private property.
If it's, if it's on their private property and zoned correctly for doing business, they don't see why we can't be there for as long as we want, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on this amendment? Okay, any further discussion before we go to a vote? I think we've kind of beat this to death. Please, Vice Mayor.
So just one thing, so I'm, I'm hesitant to, to vote without seeing and, um, knowing how things are going to be clarified regarding the, um, near the parks situation, so you think, I guess I'm, I'm thinking maybe we postpone?
Vote on the amendment and then postpone the meeting.
That is a possibility. We could, we could vote on the amendment and postpone and allow the city staff to kind of comb through and come back. Um, there's, there's not a huge rush on this, so if we had to postpone it, we could. Mr. Russell, did you have something else to add?
Uh, the stuff that we're talking about right now is just on private property. The stuff, the vending in the right-of-way, I think, might come up on a later date, so the stuff that we're talking about right now, I think, is just on private property. If it's on, you know, seven days and stuff, so.
Thank you. We get to have great fun here on Tuesday nights.
Oh, yeah, it's awesome, so, so, I mean, I think when, uh, being able to serve in the right-of-way like on parks, you know, that's, might be another discussion of what we can and cannot do, but I think right now, it's just the, uh, being able to serve on private property for an extended number of days, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on the amendment, then we can talk about postponement? All right, City Clerk, on the amendment, roll call, please. Schuster?
Yes.
Charles? McKinney, excuse me. I switched sheets on this. Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikis absent?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you. That amendment carries. Uh, so now would we like to discuss the postponement? It is 8:30. We have spent quite a bit of time on this tonight.
Postponement for what?
Well, I believe that city staff would like some time to comb through, uh, and the city attorney would like to comb through this and figure out how seven days with Parks and Rec and all of that will kind of shake out.
So you're saying we're not going to vote on second reading? We're going to postpone second reading?
It's a, it's an option for council. We could postpone it so we could have a further discussion, or we can try to do this on third reading. Generally, councils tried not to have heavy discussions or lots of amendments on third reading. It's council's pleasure. Councilor Schuster?
That's just what I was going to state. I think that right now, maybe staff and council would like to discuss this, come up with an exact statement, and they might say, we would like you to put in this amendment on it wherein section, um, ru, uh, number three that says mobile vending shall not be stored overnight more than seven days in business private property only, and all other rules to parks and residential streets will stay as written. So I just think he might want to wordsmith it so that it's exact and concise, so that we don't have to now come back in a month and say, oh, no, we did this wrong, we got to redo this. And I, I agree that if they would like it, if they would like it, that's fine.
I would need somebody to put a motion on the floor for postponement if that's council's, council's pleasure.
Kate's got her hand up.
Vice Mayor?
I move that we postpone, um.
Next regular meeting would be the first week of September.
Original ordinance number 1972 to, and we have to have a date certain, right?
First regular meeting in September.
September 5?
Yep.
Thank you.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Councilor Schuster. Any other discussion on the postponement?
Is that debatable?
Yes, it is. It is. Councilor Hanson?
Let me just, uh, observe, on this whole matter, uh, and that includes the postponement, I'm reminded of the old movie Amadeus where the, uh, the emperor at one point said, too many notes, too many notes. And, and, uh, this strikes me as too many rules, too many rules. Uh, and, uh, when it comes back eventually, I intend to vote against it. Uh, I'll make that point right now. I find it too complex for my feeble mind to understand it all. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on the postponement? All right, uh, any com, public comment on the postponement? City Clerk, roll call, please. Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
McKinney? Polikis absent? Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Som, Somerville?
Yes.
That's six yeses, two noes, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you. That, uh, motion carries, so that is postponed until September 5th. So we will see, um, we'll see for the people in the audience, we'll, uh, the week prior to Thursday or Friday, the week prior, all the information, any potential amendments or changes will be uploaded to the website, and please don't hesitate to speak with city staff. In the meantime, uh, city manager, city attorney, planning staff, uh, with any questions or suggestions that you guys have, please. And thank you for coming tonight and participating and hanging out with us for a couple of hours, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
We can't wait to see you again.
Yes. Same time, same place in about three weeks. Um, let's move on to number 14, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? This is your opportunity to tell us about anything. No? All right. Moving on to item number 15, consideration of future council work sessions. Does anybody have any suggestions? Nothing? Nothing? No.
We've got enough.
We've got enough. Never enough. Why do you keep it up? I don't think I had any on my list. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move on to item number 16. Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Honor. I move that council adjourned to executive session regarding land negotiations according to Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A, uh, Roman Number 7.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gabriel.